Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could all please rise for a moment of silence and salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Welcome to the January 2 North Hills School District Committee Meeting with Action. I wanted to announce that the Board held an executive session on Tuesday, December 17th, and this evening from 6:30 to 6:55 PM to discuss personnel and legal matters. Our first item this evening is a very exciting one. We are going to be recognizing Mr. Joe Welch, who has received an honor as Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year.
Come on up, Joe. It is my pleasure to congratulate Mr. Joe Welch on his honor for the 2020 Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year. The Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year program is cosponsored by the Pennsylvania Department of Education and by the Pennsylvania Chapter of the National State Teachers of the Year, which recognizes teacher excellence by honoring K-12 teachers in public education who have made outstanding academic contributions. Additionally, in November, Mr. Welch was named the American Middle Level Association's Educator of the Year, and in October, he also received the Outstanding Teacher of the Year Award for the Pennsylvania Council for the Social Studies. As Pennsylvania's Teacher of the Year, Mr. Welch will serve as an advocate at the state level for all of Pennsylvania's public education teachers. He will present as a keynote speaker at various conferences and events, and he will facilitate workshops and professional development sessions throughout the Commonwealth. He will also represent Pennsylvania at the National Teacher of the Year Ceremony at the White House. Mr. Welch is the third North Hills teacher to be named Pennsylvania's Teacher of the Year. Lois Rebich was a reading specialist at Ross Elementary and was named Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year in 2007, and Mr. Fred Del Monte was Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year in 1979 while he was working as the Director of Bands and Orchestras at the North Hills Junior High School. Later this year, we will be unveiling a Pennsylvania Teachers of the Year recognition wall honoring all three of the district's PA Teachers of the Year. This wall will be located outside of the LGI Room, and it will look much like our distinguished alumni wall that is behind me. So I'd like to congratulate Joe. Joe, we here at North Hills are so very proud of you and of all of your accomplishments. Congratulations.
So, in preparing just a few quick remarks here, I was just continually overwhelmed with such a sense of North Hills pride. And somebody asked me, over holiday break, they actually said, you know, what's the most impactful day that you ever had in your career? Okay, I've had dynamic students, really great friends that I've worked with as colleagues, but impactful day in my career? I didn't know what to say. So I thought about it a little bit, and I can remember an August day in 2007, a young-looking, much younger-looking now than this now, man walking down the hallway, it was me, to my classroom, so nervous, trying to pretend like I'm cool and calm and collected. And I'm about to walk into my classroom, and I thought, oh, you know, there's this opening day ceremony, I don't know what's gonna go on down there, I heard they're gonna put my picture up on the screen, like, what's that all about? Hear the band downstairs? And this man pops out of his classroom, so excited, "Oh, you're Joe Welch, you're gonna be on my team." I'm like, I've never met this man in my life before. He knows my name, and he said he was excited that I was here. And that man is a math teacher that I had the privilege of working with for several years. His name is Joe O'Donnell, and I think he is an embodiment of what is great about North Hills. It's that somebody always is glad that you're here, always has your back, and is always there to support you. And so when I think about the embodiment, or what my most impactful day was, it was my first day at North Hills. It truly was. I really do have such a sense of pride for the North Hills School District, and I can't wait to share that all across Pennsylvania over the next few years. So thank you to all of Scoreboard's past and present. I know you do a lot of work, so thank you for all of your support, and to Dr. Manarino, Dr. Williams, and the rest of the administrative team. Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll now move on to Board Member Comments. Are there any members of the School Board who would like to make comments at this time? Moving on, do we have anybody who's signed up for public comments on agenda items only? No? Okay. All right, we'll move on to Education, which is me. We'll be starting off with a presentation on academic achievement from Dr. Beth Williams.
Good evening. It is my pleasure tonight to review our 2018-2019 academic achievement data. Even though we measure student assessment and growth every single day in a variety of ways in this district, when we reflect at our overall progress on an annual basis, we look at five standardized measures that we look to as our marker to see how well we're doing as a district. Those measures include the PSSAs, the Keystone exams, the SATs, our AP exam scores, and the NOCTE exams given at Beatty Tech. Tonight, I have the privilege of sharing with you how well we did in 2018 and 2019, and we're gonna begin our presentation looking at our PSSA data. Please note, our PSSAs are given annually to all students in grades three through eight. So the first PSSA data I want to show you is that of English Language Arts. And what I presented to you on the screen are the average scores of the state, which is designated by the black bar on the graph, and the red is the North Hills averages, and they're grades three through eight. As you can see very, very clearly, in the English Language PSSAs in grades three through eight, North Hills is significantly higher than what the state average is, sometimes as much as 25-26 percent. We're doing better, so that is a great example of how well we're doing. The next graphic I wanted to share with you tonight is, I wanted to share with you student scoring advanced on the PSSAs. So we're gonna look specifically at the ELA. The reason we look at the advanced score is because it is not enough for our students just to do proficient. While that is great, and we're very, very pleased with that, we want to continue to grow our students every single year, and we want them to continue to strive for excellence and do their very best on every single assessment. So when you look at the averages, again, between the state of Pennsylvania, and you look at the averages for us at North Hills, you can see we're almost double in some of our categories in grades three through eight. Again, a very, very impressive score, and that is simply the advanced numbers right there. The next PSSA that I want to share with you result is that of Mathematics. The Mathematics looks a little bit different because two years ago, the state revamped the entire PSSAs, but in particular, Mathematics was much more aligned to the core standards of the Pennsylvania state. So districts all across the state, their averages looked a little bit different. As you can see, though, again, North Hills, as designated by the red bars, continues to excel at a much higher rate with regard to the averages by, in comparison with the state. Still, again, doing significantly better, sometimes more than 35-30 percent better. So again, very, very nicely done in grades three through eight. Again, looking at the advanced PSSAs, as you can see, still doing well, grades three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Seven and eight are very interesting grades because not only are those students taking the PSSA exam, they're also taking, if they're in Algebra I, the Keystone exams. So those students are looking at two standardized tests oftentimes, or sometimes in one year, and those tests look markedly different, but we continue to excel at the advanced level as well. And last but not least is the PSSA for Science. Students only in grades four and grade eight take the science exam. Historically, North Hills has scored incredibly well on both of those assessments in fourth and eighth grade. The 2018-2019 data is the same. We, again, scored very, very well in comparison to the state at both grade levels. We are markedly higher at both areas. And last but not least, again, is the advanced averages for the science PSSA, again, in grades four and grade eight. As you can see, almost doubling in grades eight, so again, outstanding job on the PSSAs. Our next data that we want to review with regard to how well we did last year is our Keystone Assessment Data. Keystones are given at the end of your Algebra I course, your Biology course, and your English Literature course. The first one we want to look at is the Algebra I Keystone, and as you can see, that span is from grades seven, eight, and nine. And again, very, very impressive scores in seventh and eighth grade when you're looking at how well our students are doing. Ninth grade does not give you the full picture. Students can take Algebra I as early as seventh grade, they can take it in eighth grade, and quite frankly, the majority of our students do take Algebra I in either seventh or eighth grade. Those students who are taking Algebra I in ninth grade are those students who need more support, and that's why they wait till their ninth grade year to take it. And that support is often given to those students through two different programs, typically our Special Education Program, as well as our ELL, or English Language Learners Program. So the fact that in ninth grade, our students who need the most support are still scoring higher than the state average at 42 percent, that's pretty impressive, because those kids need a tremendous amount of support. The Biology Keystone, as you can see from the scores, were almost equivalent with the state. Biology is considered to be the hardest standardized assessment out of the PSSAs and out of the Keystone's. And the reason for that is simply the depth and breadth of the content in Biology. There are a ton of standards, a lot of content, a lot of different topics. Quite frankly, there are a lot of people at the state level who oftentimes say that the Biology Keystone exam is as difficult as what a Biology College freshman test would be. It's a very, very difficult course. So we are pretty much equivalent with where the state is at. And last but not least is the Literature Keystone exam, and as you can see, again, North Hills average 78 percent is indeed higher than that of the state's. The other thing that I think is important in particular with the Keystone exams is the fact that I know Mr. McHernan in the high school administration has been working very, very closely with our high school teachers. While they're pleased with the scores, they want to do better, because that's who our teachers are. So they held a data summit earlier this fall to really dig into the data and look at areas where we're doing really, really well, and look in areas where we can improve. The challenge of that is, every single year, you have a different cohort of kids taking the test, so their needs are different, their needs change. So our teachers spend time early in the school year, looking at the data, getting to know our students, to obviously make those adjustments that they need to in their instruction to support and help kids do their very best on the exams.
I have a question about the Keystone's?
Yes.
On the Biology. I know there was a time when we were a little bit out of sync with the years and when the students took the test and when they took the course. Are we in alignment now?
We are. We're in much better alignment with regard to that. We also used to have Biology predominantly double-blocked, and that was a challenge oftentimes with regard to that, too, because you had kids testing in December, you had other kids testing in May. The only course that's now double-blocked is Honors Biology, and again, that's for a variety of reasons. That's to prepare those kids, because again, they're on the honors track and they're looking at taking some higher-end courses. So most of our Biology courses have now moved to be a full year of instruction, and we are seeing some improvement with retention and helping the kids, and getting into the content so there's a further and more deep understanding of what they're actually learning. Thank you. Any other questions?
You sort of touched on this, but I was gonna ask, sort of generally with all these, if there was, with the Literature Keystone, you mentioned that this is something that you think needs a little bit, there's room for improvement. Is that the only subject that you think that that's, or that the administrators think that that's the situation? Are there any others that they're kind of are getting a closer look?
There, in every single building, even at the elementarys, they take this data and they hold a data summit at the beginning of the year. They review their scores, they look at exactly what's going on, and then they have data team meetings, and this is what they talk about. Not only the cohort of kids, here's what's going on, here's how this child scored, here's what their individual needs are, but obviously, then they're looking at the content and the order and the amount of time that they're spending on topics and things as such, to make sure that that alignment is there. So they do have the right and the ability to make those adjustments and do that. So that is certainly something that they do. And when I talk about Curriculum Council, a little bit later, part of what Curriculum Council does through the curriculum cycle is, they do look at test scores, they do look at that historical or longitudinal data, and they look to make sure scope and sequence is where it needs to be. Are we spending enough time on this topic or this content area based upon the data? What do we need to do a little bit different? So that is part of Curriculum Council. So that's an ongoing process that all of our teachers in. When we talk about being a data-driven district, we are. Our teachers clamor for these scores, they are very, very anxious to get their hands on this data. They start emailing us very, very early in the summer saying, "Give us the data, we wanna see how we did, we wanna see what our kids did." So I think that is just the norm now at what they do. And again, I think with the Keystone's, it's very, very challenging, because the Keystone's are not considered to be graduation requirement by the state until the class of 2022. That continues to change, the target continues to change with what's proficient, what's advanced, that kind of shifts and change every single year. So it is very, very challenging. The good news is, our teachers are relentless. They will look at that data and they will do anything that they need to do to continue to improve scores.
And am I understanding this correctly, on the Algebra I for seventh grade, it's 100 percent, does that mean that everybody that took the test?
Everyone that took the, correct, were proficient or advanced. That is correct. Yes, yes. So again, you can see seventh and eighth grade, that's why when you look at the ninth grade, that's why I'm saying, when you're looking at that data, you need to understand, those are kids who need much more math support than what they've traditionally given, and the fact that that number is that high is kudos to those teachers that teach Algebra I at the high school. Okay? Any other questions before I head into the next?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Do we, or could we ever look at these results broken down by gender?
We can. We definitely can do that. I can run some different reports and provide some different things with regard to that. I certainly can provide some of that information. Thank you. It's not a problem. Okay, the next dataset that I'd like to look at are the SATs. SATs, you're looking at two different things. You're looking at evidence-based reading and writing, and you're looking at mathematics. The interesting part about the SATs, this number becomes very, very interesting, because you can compare what North Hills is doing versus a state level versus the global level. So the global average at evidence-based reading and writing is 531, the PA average is 545, and North Hills' average is 571. So yet again, North Hills is markedly above both the global average as well as the state average in the reading and writing. With regard to math, same thing, the global average is 528, Pennsylvania average is 536, and North Hills' average is 575. So again, our students continue to perform well above what the global and state average is in most of these categories.
Is 800 still the top score?
Yes, yes.
I know they changed some of the metrics.
They did, they did. Okay, Advanced Placement is the next dataset. AP exams are given to every single student who has enrolled in an AP-designated course. AP exams, you can score anywhere from a one to a five on an AP exam. Traditionally, if you score a three, a four, or a five, colleges will accept that score and allow you to test out. You receive credit, you don't have to go ahead, you don't have to take that course. So that becomes very, very important for a couple of different reasons. One, it's timing. If you can get some AP credits or some college and high school credits, and they transfer and your university takes that, then you can spend less time in college. Financially, obviously, that is huge. We have actually had students who have gone into and started, I can think of one student in particular, who started their sophomore year of college. They achieved that many AP credits and CHS credits at the high school when they were there. North Hills is very unique in the fact that we offer about 22 Advanced Placement courses. We have some of the highest Advanced Placement numbers of courses offered in Allegheny County. If you look at that, at this sheet right here or this data graph, 69 percent of North Hills students are scoring an average of three or higher on the exam. 69 percent of all of our students. That's pretty impressive when you look at the comparisons with the United States and you obviously look at the state of Pennsylvania. Our kids do very, very well, our teachers do a nice job with AP courses.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do we?
Sorry, I didn't.
Do we track how many kids in each class choose to take the test?
Do you take AP?
Who take the test? Because I took AP English junior year, and I would say half of my class decided not even to take the test because we didn't feel prepared.
We, we take, we pay for the test, the district pays for the test, and they take the test. So we take care of all that, so very.
They ended that a couple of years after you graduated.
Yes. So, yeah. So our kids take it, it's pretty much what is considered to be. If you're gonna go into that, you're gonna go ahead and take the test. That's why when I say 70 percent of our students score three or higher, it's pretty impressive. And again, this has become, it's always been very important, but the fact now that our kids can leave with so many credits, whether AP credits or CHS credits, it's pretty nice, speaking as a parent now, when my kiddo, who did not go to North Hills, went to a neighboring school district and came home and was able to enter into college with six credits already under her belt, because she had taken some AP classes. That's huge from a financial standpoint as well.
That's also the reason why we pay for AP classes. So when we looked at this, and again, Mr. McCurry was still the principal whenever we went with this idea, but it was, the AP exam is a part of the AP course. So if you take the AP course, you're required now to take the AP exam, and because of that requirement, the district pays for the AP exams. So what we found at the time, whenever you were in school and deciding to take or not to take, a lot of families chose not to take it because of the financial burden. You've got a number of seniors that families are shelling out checks for everything as you're approaching that freshman year in college, and then in May, you have a student that might want to take four AP exams at the tune of $95. It was just too much to ask families to do that. So when we talked to kids, they would take four, but they didn't have the financial wherewithal to do so. So we chose to make it a part of the course, make it a requirement, and pay for that also. So that's sort of where that whole thing came about. So it was less of, "I'm prepared, I'm not prepared," and we found, yes, that was happening, but we found more about, "I can't afford this." And so we pay for it, and that's where now everybody who is an AP student takes the AP exam.
And I will tell you, I don't know of any other school district, I'm sure Dr. Manarino might know of another school district, where the school district's commitment is as such that they're paying for those exam. It didn't happen at my daughter's school, because I wrote a lot of checks.
And you'll see, you'll see in the fall, the number of AP scholars that we have that kind of validates that, that you have a large number of students that are scoring three or above on three, four, five, six, 10 AP exams. So we've had National AP Scholars, AP Scholars with Distinction every single year since we've gone down that path of making it a part of the program and paying for them to take the test. So the outcome is much greater, and Beth talked about the fact that what it's doing for our students is they're able to transfer those credits into college credits. And, and again, this, I don't know what, how long ago these numbers were, but at one point, I remember Jerry White was the gifted teacher at the high school, and I was still the principal. In that school year, our graduating class earned 850 college credits, just the seniors. It's eight college degrees through AP and CHS. So those are the types of return on investment those things are doing for the kids in this community, that is not happening, like Beth said, at a neighboring school, and I can tell you, it's not happening in the school that my children go to school in.
Jim Cassandra's daughter is actually the student that I'm referencing, what I'm saying, started at Penn State as a sophomore. She is the one who took advantage of AP courses and CHS courses and was able to start at Penn State as a sophomore, which is pretty impressive.
Dr. Williams, I have one question.
Sure.
Do we have the ability to see data from other public schools?
Yes.
So for example, we could queue data to see how we?
Yes.
Guts up against Allegheny County schools?
That data has just become available to us.
How about cyber charter schools? Charter schools, do we have the ability to see those?
I'm not thinking we do as easily.
It's a public school. It's in the same database, and we have the eMatrix program to put in just about anything and everything that you want.
So we can queue any of that?
I can, we just got that in December. That was made available to us in December, so I will be able to have where we're at in Allegheny County, in the sense of where we rank as elementary schools, is where we rank. I, we just got our hands on that in late December.
No, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, 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 not at all.
Especially with the charter and cyber charters, really.
Irritating?
Correct.
Sorry.
Sorry.
The next slide is something that we do here at North Hills, which is the AP Honor Roll, and this is something we just do in-house to celebrate any courses, AP courses, where over 90 percent of the students receive a passing score. So any course where 90 percent of the students receive a three, or four, or five, we like to recognize them. So you can see this year, we are lucky enough to have eight courses this year where that happened, and that's the passing percentage with the number or the number of higher. So ranging from Calc BC all the way down to Smart courses, so well done to those teachers. And our last dataset is our NOCTE exam. Students at Beatty take a national standardized assessment in their area of concentration at Beatty Tech. And this year, or I'm sorry, for 2018-2019, I'm very pleased to say that 71 percent of North Hills students scored advanced or competent on the NOCTEs, which is obviously, again, another nice job. So as you can see from my data review, I would be very remiss in my responsibility if I did not acknowledge the hard work and efforts of all of our professional staff, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our teaching assistants. They are not only teaching the standards and the content to our students, they're building relationships with kids to learn how to motivate them and support them to do their very, very best. And the other part of that process is, is communicating with parents and getting them on board. So you now have that triangle with the school. You have the parent, you have the student, and you have the school all working together to make sure that every single student can be as successful as they possibly can be. So all in all, we did an outstanding job in 2018 and 2019, so we should be very, very proud. Any other questions on data? Because I believe I'm up again.
You're up.
You are, yeah. I asked Dr. Williams to put together a presentation on Curriculum Council to, particularly for the new Board members, to explain that process and explain where certain classes are in the cycle, so.
Sure. One of the most major elements of my job is obviously working with the curriculum, and Curriculum Council is a great way for us to interact with our teachers, and sit down and really talk about what our curriculum looks like K through 12, talking about what the standards are, what assessments we're gonna use, what materials, what resources, what programs, talking about the vertical alignment K through 12, how one grade leads to the next grade, and also talking about the horizontal alignment to make sure that all students in all, let's say, kindergarten classes across the district are learning the same material and what that needs to look like. So Curriculum Council is a part of that process that allows me to work very, very closely with the teachers. So Curriculum Council is a teacher-administrator committee that assists in providing that centralized oversight of a very coordinated curriculum schedule. I have the honor and privilege of selecting what administrators that I want to invite to sit on Curriculum Council, whereas NHEA is allowed and asked to please select the teachers that they would like to participate on that committee. So they give me their list of invitations of teachers, I invite them, and then we participate in a committee. We meet as minimum of three times a year to have various discussions. Some of the functions of Curriculum Council, you can see on the slide in front of you, talking about innovative thinking, obviously preparing our students for what's next in the world, making sure that we are seeking solutions for any challenges that face us and things such as that, making sure we're communicating transparently to all staff in all buildings so they understand what we're trying to do with the curriculum, and that they have a say in that, and they have a person that they can go to and share their concerns or their ideas with. Making sure that parents in the community understand what our curriculum looks like and that they're informed about that, and making sure that we prioritize what our projects are going to be, what changes we're gonna make, and what we need to do. We're looking at financial requirements for the curriculum. We're a very, very large district with a lot of different departments and a lot of moving parts, so making sure that we look at the financial requirements and making sure we're prioritizing that, and making sure we're doing what we need to be doing with regard to the budget. Provides a school district staff with the ability to collaborate, again, assess, select, and adopt instructional media for use. We ask the teachers to go out and look for different things that they want to use and share that information with us. Talk about personnel needs, what that needs to look like, where we're going with the curriculum. Do we need to add a new course? Does that, do we have the staff to be able to do that? And educational needs in terms of established goals and programs. Again, we want to make sure the curriculum that we're offering is meeting the district envision of this district and what that looks like. In order for us to do that correctly, what we need to do is we have to have a curriculum cycle, enable us to go ahead and work with the different departments, and we do that in a cyclical manner, because it's a systematic way of making sure that we're giving every department the time and due diligence to go through the process, to evaluate what they need. of making sure that we're giving every department the time and due diligence to go through the process, to evaluate what they need, identify that, evaluate that, implement it, and monitor it. So we use a six-year curriculum cycle here. And what I did is I went ahead and gave you the six-year curriculum cycle. And the first cycle, first part of that is the needs assessment phase. And as you can see in the needs assessment phase, this is where basically teachers are gathering research and information, student performance data. They visit schools if there's other programs that they want to see. They bring all that together, look at the curriculum guides, all of this information, talk to all their department members and decide kind of what do we need to do? What are our strengths? What are our areas' needs? What direction do we want to go next? This year in the school year, we had the following departments on the needs assessment phase, seven through twelve science, seven through twelve technology education, K through twelve library media, and K through twelve school counseling. Another part of the cycle is the present proposal, write your curriculum phase. After you've gathered all that information, you've talked with your department members, you've gathered that research, you've looked at data, you've done all those different things. What we want to do is the teachers then have an opportunity to choose if they want to, to pilot a program. Look at different strategies, different materials that they potentially want to use or want to implement. Look at textbooks if they want to purchase textbooks, different things such as that, before they start revising that curriculum again in that school year. They also provide as part of the presenting of the proposal, a budget proposal. So we ask them, okay, if you have a chance to pick what you want, you're telling us what your vision is and how you need to move forward in a department. You need to tell us what resources, tools that you need, but we need to see what the financial obligations with that would be. So they present a budget as well. This year on the presenting the proposal and writing the curricular phase, seven through twelve math, K through six social studies, seven through twelve social studies, and K through twelve art.
A quick question about that. With the sixth grade moving to the middle school, is it still going to stay like this with the divisions or would six move?
That is something that Dr. Manarino and I have been discussing because I have brought that question up. We think we have a plan or an idea that I'm sure he will be able to share with you with regard to that. I think it would be very challenging for our elementary curriculum leaders to be able to go to all four elementary buildings and also be responsible for coming here to the hilltop. That would be five buildings. So we have some different ideas on that with the curriculum leader, but I think we need to look at that to be able to make sure that we're representing appropriately the needs of the sixth grade. So great question. The third phase is the curriculum development and implementation. That's the year the, the teachers have written the summer before what their new curriculum is. Then they begin to actually implement that. And the different materials such as that. And again, they have meetings as a department. They talk about how things are going and that information is then shared with me. So I'm aware of the direction things are going. Is the implementation happening? Is it happening the way we perceived it to be? Do we need to make any changes or tweaks to that? This year, K through twelve music, seven through twelve literacy arts, and K through six social studies is on that. K through six social studies is in parentheses because they're unique this year because while this is the phase that they really should be on, they were involved in a pilot process two years ago. The pilot, we decided midway through the pilot, this was not the best pilot for them. So we brought in another pilot. So they're kind of off cycle right now because we wanted to take the time because the teachers just said, look, this isn't the right material. We really need to investigate this. And we felt it was important to give them the time to do that. And then you have the last two phases of the cycle, which is monitor and evaluate, one, first year, and then the second year. And again, shifts to articulation. It's again, any areas that are challenges or continue to be problems, any of the changes that we need to. This is where if things are continuing to move forward, you can still present changes to curriculum council and say, hey, look, we've gone ahead, we've implemented this, we're using this. We're not sure that this is working out so well. Maybe we need to do something different. This year, that's seven through twelve English, K through six science, and K through twelve business and computer literacy. And then last but not least, is that phase where I talked about, where we talked about data and the influence of what that needs to look like and why we need to look at that longitudinal data and what and how our students are performing to make sure that what we're doing is not only still aligned to the standards, but our students are still being successful, that our programming and our materials and our resources are still correct. And this year, that's K through twelve health and physical education and K through six English language arts. So that is curriculum council in a nutshell. Any questions on that that I can answer?
I have a question.
Sure.
So what happens to this cycle when something like, hey, Pluto's no longer a planet happens, but we're five years away from changing the science?
No, the beautiful piece about that is if something like that comes up and we need to make changes, the curriculum is a living, breathing document. Teachers have the right every single day. We ask them to go ahead and make changes and things such as that. If the standards change, something such as that shifts or changes. Basically what happens is there's a department meeting, they let the curriculum leader know, I say, yep, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and make that change. And if we had to have to have them rewrite curriculum or tweak that over the summer, we can do that. So adding them to make those decisions and choices, that's an ongoing process. While this is the process that we like to keep them on, there are changes. We need to be mindful of that. We're not going to wait for five years if there's a change and say, okay, we'll catch in five years and then we'll finally figure it out. We will make shifts as necessary for the students and for the teachers.
And the, the surveys that get pushed out to the community asking what we feel about the curriculum?
Yes. Yes.
That's part of the curriculum council?
Yes. This year, I did something a little bit different with curriculum council. I created a Google classroom where I asked all that material to be presented so people can have access to that. And certainly if you as a school board would be interested in seeing any of those proposals, they have been video recorded. So we could have them in advance to review them, so we can ask questions and be very thorough and mindful in that. And their proposals are on there. So I would be more than happy to invite you to be a part of that curriculum council. And you can see all the documentation that's been turned in thus far. I will be doing a presentation as I get a little bit further into the budget and telling you, here's where we're at with curriculum council. Here's what was proposed. Here's the decisions that we went ahead and made as a council, and this is how we're going to move forward with it. So I'll be doing that as well. Okay?
I, I think that sounds wonderful.
Sure.
I've tried to provide feedback in those surveys and just trying to be an engaged parent, but sometimes, you know, it's, tell us how you feel about our science curriculum. And I think, well, I don't really know much about our science curriculum. How do I engage with the district and give my feedback? So I think the more we can give parents, this is our curriculum, now tell us how you feel about it, I think, the better.
Yeah, and I think our teachers do a really, really nice job with that. And I think our curriculum night programs that we have at the high school and at the middle school definitely help that process out tremendously. Because again, speaking as the former high school principal, I mean, the program of studies at the high school is eighty-five pages long. That's how many courses we offer. It is unbelievably spectacular what we offer at the high school. So it can become very overwhelming as a parent to say, oh, my gosh, okay, you want to talk about science curriculum. I can name only the classes my kiddos in, but I might not have the whole scope or spectrum of what that looks like. Absolutely. Any other questions? Yes?
The curriculum night for middle school and high school well attended, parent-wise?
Yes, it is actually very, very well attended. Both of those events are very, very well attended. Now again, when you get to the high school, by the time you're a senior, most of those kids are kind of doing their own thing, but definitely both are very, very well attended. That's your opportunity to really engage as a parent and as a student with the teachers and say, talk to me a little bit about what this class looks like. And again, particularly at the high school, when you go from the middle school where you have limited choices of electives, just because there's certain courses you have to take, to where you go over to the high school where again, you have three hundred plus courses. It's a really great opportunity to really talk with teachers and find out what we offer. Because again, it, it's unbelievable when you see the offerings that we have at North Hills. It really is. Speaking as a parent now of a kiddo who goes to a much smaller school that just does not have, his daughter watched me work on the program of studies at the high school and would say, I'm really jealous. Can you talk to Dr. Manarino and see if I can come over and take classes at North Hills? We had that conversation a lot. Can I answer any other questions? Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Thank you for those presentations. For our next item, it is a request that the board approve Accelerate Education for the provision of the district online learning management system. As we've mentioned, the district has our own online academy as well as hybrid and blended learning. So the district requested proposals from two vendors in addition to the existing provider for the online learning management system. The proposals were subject to review by the Learning Management System Committee comprised of teachers, principals, and administrators. And after detailed scrutiny, Accelerate Education was the preferred choice. And they also provided the lowest-priced online learning management system deemed to be sufficiently comprehensive and most compatible with the existing course offerings. The course pricing is defined within Exhibit B of the attached master services of the license agreement. I move that Item Three under Education be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I had a question about the, the online learning. What's our current enrollment, either hybrid or full online with the students that take those courses? It's pretty low, isn't it?
It is pretty low. I would say it's about sixty-five students.
Okay.
And the majority of our kids now that are taking the classes are taking individual classes. We don't have a whole ton that are online all the time.
Right.
We have more and more kids, particularly at the high school, who for whatever reason can't fit into their schedule, want to try a different course, want to try online learning for a different reason because of preparing for college, that end up taking that. But we don't have a tremendous amount of students that, that are full-time enrolled in our online program.
And I mean, I think we talked a little bit about this, but you like this program a lot better than what they have. And I mean, I, I would think that the hope would be that if students are interested in this, obviously, we, we prefer that they'd stay within the district. And so I.
Absolutely. We would prefer that they stay within the district. I think what we like the most, both vendors that we had were, were very, very good. The nice part about this, the teachers that were on that committee, I think what they most appreciated were two things. Number one, it's still using the same platform that they're using now.
Okay.
It looks very, very similar. So for students and teachers, the learning margin, the learning curve, they're used to it. They've already navigated. They know how to use it. The other piece to it is the availability and accessibility of the courses. The courses align very nicely with some of the courses that the kids already take. Because oftentimes what will happen is you'll have a student who is taking brick and mortar face to face, they'll decide, hey, nope, I want to go online. They'll go online. Six weeks later, they'll say, online learning's not for me. I want to come back face to face. And this kind of allows us that ability to provide them that opportunity if they want to take it and then come back to us and learn with us face to face. So we're, I was very, very pleased with this program, as was this, the recommendation of the teacher committee, which was great.
Good. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no items under athletics and activities unless Mrs. Ponyatowsky has something to add. No? Okay. Moving on to A.W. Beatty, Mrs. Renaback, do you have anything to report on for that? Okay. Next then is personnel and Mrs. Spade.
Thank you. Personnel is discussed in executive session. And I move that personnel items one through four be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Little, do you have anything under community and intergovernmental relations this evening?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Ms. Cozera, do you have a legislative report for us?
So this is new for me. So I have a couple of things that I, I brought to talk about. And, you know, I'm interested in hearing from the board and from the public, you know, what they'd like to hear about as far as legislation. We get updates from the Pennsylvania School Board Association, which is PSBA. And we talked a little bit about this at one of our, one of our last meetings is that some of us, including Mrs. Mathis and I, went to the PSBA conference, which is annually in October. And there was a lot of great discussions there. And I was thinking I might want to, you know, discuss some of the things that we talked about in some of those meetings, like some pending legislation and other things that might be of interest to people. So one of the emails that we got from PSBA talks about some of the most recent legislation in the state. One of them is Act Ninety-One, which deals with school safety personnel and financial literacy graduation credit. The school safety personnel is just includes some training requirements for school police officers, which I, you know, they would let us know if we needed to update any policies. But I, I think we're in compliance with the act or we would update if we need to. But the, but this was interesting is that Act Ninety-One requires public schools to allow students in grades nine to twelve to apply up to one credit earned for successfully completing a course in personal finance. This will start at the graduate, with students graduating at the end of the twenty twenty-one year. So that's something we're going to have to be looking into in the near future. One other, Act Ninety-Three and Act One-Eleven defines, amends the definition of tobacco pride to include electric nicotine delivery systems, which I know we have recently updated our policies to, to reference that sort of more comprehensive discussion of what, you know, constitutes tobacco, basically. So that's all that I have for this time. But again, if anybody's interested in hearing anything in particular or having me research anything, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Next up, it's also Ms. Cozera with policy.
Okay. So I have the first reading of the Policy Two Forty-Three, Homeless Students Revisions. North Hills was selected for homeless monitoring in October. During that monitoring, it was required that we update our homeless policy as the ESSA has outlined new requirements. The monitor provided us, provided us with examples of other districts' policies. The changes were minor, included several changes to various terms of the policy, additions of terms, the removal of awaiting foster care and some updated definitions. Also newly included is guidance for districts when notifying families of a determination that does not place a child in the North Hill School District and required training for the district's identified homeless liaison. The revisions are in red and there are recommendations from the policy examples of other school districts. Revisions highlighted in yellow are not from examples of other districts, but are relevant language additions essential to the policy. So this was pursuant to some recommendations. This is the first reading. So if anybody has any concerns, we have the opportunity to discuss them either now or at future meetings. I move that Policy Item One be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I, I just have some notes on this. I talked to Nicole Bazila a little bit this morning just because I wanted to learn more about, about homeless students. Because I didn't know anything really about this policy. So I just thought I'd share. So Nicole is our designated district liaison for homelessness. And the IU also has a regional homeless liaison. Nicole told me that this policy is due to the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act of nineteen eighty-seven. It was the first significant federal legislative response to homelessness. So it defines homeless children, and you can find this on page one of the policy, as individuals who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. So there are a whole bunch of examples of how that could happen on page one of the policy. But the act basically ensured that homeless children receive busing to and from school and allows them to remain registered at their school of origin while homeless. And kids are also allowed to be registered at school without normally required documents. So this policy just basically talks about that. So the original policy was written during No Child Left Behind. And like Sandy said, we're now updating it because ESSA replaced it and required updates. And then I went through the policy and just kind of asked Nicole some questions. So on page one, it says that as a district, we are required to identify homeless students. And I was just curious how we did that. She said that a lot of it comes from self-reporting from families. Families will just let our district know if something has happened. One of those examples on page one. But we also get reports from agencies sometimes that are helping with housing. Or returned mailings or disconnected phone numbers can provide a clue. But something that I thought was really interesting too, was that there are times where teachers or administrators might sense that there's an issue and then the district just decides whoever has the best relationship with the family will reach out and just kind of try to figure out what's going on and kind of see if we can help. On page two, it says that we are required to provide public notice of the educational rights of homeless students. And I was asked how we did that. And so multiple times a year, our social workers drive around to laundromats and libraries and the hub. And the in-town suites is a big place in our area for, for this. And they drop off information and ask that it's displayed so that the families can see them. And the Department of Human Services gives our district posters that we can use. So they're hung up in every school building and pamphlets are laid out in sitting areas. And then lastly, page four, one of the big changes Nicole told me is that, is professional development in this area. So during No Child Left Behind, only Nicole and our social workers were required to receive professional development in this area, which still continues. But now with the updates to the policy, all staff are required to receive professional development on homelessness awareness and who to go to with concerns. So this was done in the fall in faculty meetings led by the principals. And she said, moving forward, it will be covered every August at the Baptist School in Service Days. So just figured I'd share what I learned.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We also have a second reading for new policy thirteen, Social Media and Electronic Communications. This was put on the agenda for first reading last, at the last meeting. This was put on the agenda for first reading last, at the last meeting, and now we're doing the second reading for this to adopt it, if we're ready to do that. The superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve Policy Item Number Three.
Does anybody second that?
I'll second.
I'd like to start off the discussion by saying that I'm not sure that this policy is robust enough, and I'm not sure if the right thing for this board to do is to pass it so that we have a policy in place and then go back and revise it, or go back now and make some substantial additions and revisions to it. But I'm concerned that it doesn't go far enough to protect the district, and it doesn't really, I think it's a little too vague, and there's a lot on here in terms of social media, including Facebook groups and communications that could be added to this policy.
One thing I wanted to mention, and I didn't, was that as the policy, we're going through a lot of our policies to kind of update them sort of more comprehensively. A lot of them have been a little bit neglected and need a little bit of love. And I think the policy that, that sort of our social media policies generally are, I mean, if they're six months old, they're probably outdated. So it might be something. I mean, I would defer to Dr. Manarino as to whether it's a good idea to adopt this policy now with the idea that we would revise it and our other social media policies, like in the short term, because I don't know if it's better to just wait, or...
It's, there's no harm to do it in either direction, to be honest with you. So if you want a policy in place, because we don't have a policy, then I would recommend we approve this policy, put it in place, and then we make this something that we review now. And to fix it and clean it up and get it to where you want it. Or you send it to committee, and we don't approve any of it until we're really comfortable with what it says. So there's two tracks, and neither of them are bad.
Okay.
I'm just curious how the other board members feel about...
I'd like to say, I don't like the idea of not having a policy out there right now, but I definitely think we should look at this a little bit more and upgrade it and really define what we're trying to say and do.
Okay. I mean, and I'm not going to take that personally at all, because...
Don't take that personally.
No, no. There's just a lot of questions. No, I know. Again, I just, when we started kind of working on this first policy, it was just to get something in place that we didn't have before and probably...
And I'd like to say, Sandy, you're doing a great job on these policies.
Thanks.
You really are. You really are.
I'm really excited about, like, going through these. It's, we already kind of started to talk about it.
It's like homework, guys.
And that was, yeah. Yeah, this is our bread and butter, right?
Dr. Nolish?
I think, I would echo, we have to start somewhere, and I think this is a great start. But I think it is pretty important that we have a policy, because we hold our students and our faculty and staff accountable to how they behave in social media, and so I think it's appropriate that we hold ourselves accountable as well. So, you know, from that, you know, that kind of, so I'm, I kind of agree with what Dr. Manarino said, I can see either way of doing it. But when I think about it in terms of that, I kind of feel like maybe we should start and go ahead and put it in place. So we could, could we revise the motion to say that we're going to adopt it?
You don't even need to. Not, I'm sorry, not to cut you off. You don't need to, because with any policy, you can make any change to any policy as a board at any time. It's going to require two readings. And so we could adopt it tonight, meet as a policy committee, clean it, and you see it on the 16th as a first reading. Like, that potential exists, and there would be nothing wrong with that.
I guess that's what I'm saying, I would be fine with doing that. Everybody else agrees.
Yes.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Nolish, you're up next with Finance.
Sorry about that. Okay, we have, this month, we have standard items under Finance. We have general fund bills, capital project fund bills, and if we look at the capital project fund bills, those, again, are sixth-grade transition project and a little bit of work that was done cleaning up some of the projects at Westview that were started. So those are, we're still in, there's nothing new, it's all just continuing what we're doing. There's food service fund bills and budget transfers, and there's an informational item on the, not on the informational item, it's the payroll. I was skipping ahead to the wrong line here. We need to approve the payroll for the month of December. So I move that Finance Items 1 through 5 be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have a comment on the food service bill. I just want to, first of all, I want to thank Jerry for, I reached out to him with some questions, and he got all the information from me, answered all my questions perfectly. But I just want to make sure that everybody, you know, when we're getting these bills and looking at them, that, you know, for example, the food service bill, I had a question about why we were paying for an awning and all of the snack line items. And, you know, what I found out was that this is, a lot of these items on here that are, that will be awning and the snack items are for our concessions at Martorelli. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that that is not a super common practice for food service departments to cover concessions. Typically, you see that being done by booster organizations. So I'm just curious, you know, and as my, in my role as the chair of support services, I'm looking forward to learning more about this and learning the pros and the cons of us doing it this way versus the way that I'm used to seeing it done. But I just, just thought it was interesting and should I would mention it.
I can just very briefly tell you that the revenue, this was a model that was established a number of years ago, and I think Dr. Manarino and Jerry can give us more background than I can, but my understanding of it has always been that the revenue is what is, helps support food service. So in other words, we're able to manage our own food service, we're able to provide a more tailored food service to our students than perhaps we would be if we outsourced food service. So part of the economics of having an in-house food service is an additional revenue stream. So that is my understanding of it from a revenue side, that this is part of our business model of how our food service operates. So if we were considering changing that revenue stream, that would have a really big impact on how our food service operates.
It would have a big impact on how our district operates, because that, our food service runs in the black, not in the red, and that's what, that is not the way a lot of other school districts around us operate with their food service. So this district does not subsidize the food service department, and you'll see that in the budgeting process. So if we change that model and move this to a fundraising model where our concession stands are run by the booster organizations as a fundraiser, that would take a significant liability into our budget, and we would then be subsidizing our food service budget, would then be a line item out of our general fund to fund the food service budget. And it's not a practice I would recommend at this point.
Without another source of revenue, they're not able to manage it the way we are now. So I don't know if that answers your question, but...
It helps. Sure.
As I said, that's a general overview of it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Philpott, do you have anything under support services for this evening?
All I will say is that support services wasn't something that I really, until I got assigned the chair, we started talking about committees, that I really knew what it was. So for anybody who doesn't know what it is, I just want to let you know that it includes food service, buildings and grounds, and transportation. So I'm really excited to be the chair of this committee. I feel like it fits in really well with what I'm really passionate about and what I know about. We are, our committee is meeting on Monday to kind of kick off and learn some, learn some more from Jerry about these areas, and then we will be sharing information with you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items this evening? No?